And I even agreed to continue if you can believe it. So, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our special council meeting on this beautiful sunny afternoon. And I'm sure nobody wanted to go to the golf course today, so this is a great opportunity to talk about this stuff, so. I just wanted to comment too, Mike said he thought maybe we could keep the discussion pretty informal today. I thought that meant I didn't have to wear a tie.
Just you, Mayor Lennox.
Okay, well, Chief Dan got the memo.
Yeah, I went really casual.
Anyways, with that said, we'll call the meeting to order and we need to get the agenda adopted first, so I'm going to suggest that's moved by Dan, seconded by Lisa, that the agenda for the June 2nd, 2021 Special Meeting of Council be accepted and passed. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Any disclosure of any interest with any items on today's agenda? I don't have any to declare, Counselor Hearn?
Nope.
Counselor Burke?
No.
Counselor Yake?
No.
And Counselor Fancy Dretcher McCabe?
No, thank you, Mayor Lennox.
Okay, with that said, and I guess I'll stop being a smart ass now. I have, I know that Mike has some very eloquent opening remarks, and I'll maybe start off with a few so that he can show me up accordingly for today's meeting. So, I really thought today's meeting and what we're gonna, the material we're gonna talk about represents a sort of a turning point in our, our organization, our community. And, and I just thought I'd elaborate a little bit on what I mean by that. I was here a number of years ago when these files, these master planning files were updated before. And I can't say that we didn't seem to pay that much attention to them then. And when I think about it, I can go and find a book on the shelf that maybe wasn't referred to as often as it could be. But I think we're out of time now where we're likely going to be needing to refer to these documents far more frequently. And, you know, really, when we talked about this a number of years ago, it seemed like growth was a thing that was far away. You know, and, and I think with the number of applications, the development applications and building permits, that growth is no longer far away anymore. And in, in the intervening time, since then, we've built some key pieces of critical infrastructure, and we've invested fairly heavily in renewing old infrastructure. And we've been keeping it well maintained while delivering high, high levels of service. We've built some capacity in our organization and, and made some preparation for this growth. But I think now we're really faced with it happening, and it's gonna be major growth, and that's gonna demand major infrastructure investment. I think it's going to challenge us to keep up with the, the hard work that we've been doing, you know, in terms of maintaining our existing infrastructure. But now we gotta, you know, make effort to prepare even more for the growth that seems to be right here on our doorstep. It's gonna take lots of effort, lots of dollars, and it's gonna present lots of new challenges to balance all of the needs for growth while continuing with our effort of delivering that high level of service and infrastructure renewal that we've come to expect. But I think it's also a point, it's a good time to stop for a minute and look back at what we've accomplished. Good time to celebrate all we've accomplished together and also embrace the challenges to come. This update, we won't be able to put it on the shelf and not look at it for a number of years. It's something that we're going to be dealing with on a regular basis, I'm, I'm quite sure. So I'm looking forward to the discussion today. I think we're talking about a topic here that has some major long-term implications for our organization and our community, and look forward to lots of discussion about where we go from here. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mike, and welcome you to overshadow all my words.
Well, thanks, Mayor Lennox. Obviously, my comments will probably mirror a lot of yours already, but yeah, I don't want to exaggerate the importance or my own enthusiasm associated with this meeting. But I have to admit, I've been looking forward to this for a long time. Over the last five years, probably longer, our organization is built towards meetings just like this. We built financial and intellectual capacity, but more importantly than that, we've built a team that is ready to excel and grow into the future. All the people participating in this virtual meeting all play and will continue to play vital roles in facilitating orderly growth in Wellington North. As Andy indicated, we no longer talk about growth coming, it is here. We can't avoid it. The county's official plan, but more importantly, our own community growth plan, speak to our population increasing from 12,000 to close to 18,000 by 2041, and then beyond 20,000 people by 2051. That is significant growth, and it's my assumption that we will reach our 2041 forecast well before 2040, 2041. So my notes say, repeat for emphasis. I just wanna, yeah, bring back to the population numbers because I, they're super daunting. Going from 12,000 people to 20,000 people even over a span of 30 years or less than 30 years is gonna be significant and will impact our organization. Today, we will touch on key infrastructure requirements that we need to implement to support that growth. The focus is water and sanitary, and they are vital, but they are and will continue to be other services that we will be expected to ensure are in place to make Wellington North a complete community. Houses without streets, streetlights, water, sidewalks, parks, sports fields, trails, and playgrounds are not homes. They're just building shelves. We cannot invest in just having the shelves and not consider all the other services that are essential to a community. The financial numbers you'll see today may seem a little scary. I understand that. But we must invest in infrastructure needs now to service the community for the next 50 years, just like the people who were here before us did. In the last five or six years, we've remained relatively stable and seen new real assessment growth between 1% and 2% per year. We have also consistently invested more than $2 million tax levy annually to address rehabilitation of our existing assets. That needs to continue. Our growth projections, development applications, and building permits suggest we are going to see much more significant assessment growth in the next five years. The township has proactively paid off old debt to ensure capacity for new debt. Some of that capacity allowed us to proceed with Phase 1 expansion at the Arthur Wastewater Treatment Plant. Our staff are proactively working on an update to our development charges by law to not only assure compliance with new regulations, but also to ensure we have the financial capacity to address growth-driven projects where applicable. Many of the projects that you'll hear about today. All these steps afford the township some financial flexibility in a complex fiscal model that we'll rely on for many forms of financing as we move forward. Is there a risk? Heck, yeah, but certainly no more risk than the people in Mount Forest and Arthur took on when they dug the existing wells, built the water towers and wastewater treatment plants 30, 40, 50 years ago faced. Doing nothing is no longer an option, and anything worth doing always has some amount of risk. It's time to strap on the chin straps and go forward boldly, confidently, knowing we have the team, we have done and will continue to do the necessary legwork, including meetings like today. It may not go seamlessly, and there will be growing pains, but this is part of shaping the community. How empowering is that? Thanks. Back to you, Mayor Lennox.
Thanks, Mike. So, next, I believe we're into presentations this afternoon, and I think first up is Water and Sanitary Master Plan Updates. Frank, are you presenting that?
Yep, for the Mount Forest system, I'll be making that presentation. I think Karen was going to display the slideshow presentation, correct?
Okay.
Alright, there we go. So, yeah, thank you, Mayor, Counselors, staff, other participants, and public, whoever is present at this meeting for giving me this opportunity to present the, the conclusions of our sanitary and water servicing technical update. So, in the past, in 2003, we had done, completed a master plan at that time. And then in 2011, it was updated, so now we're nine years later. This technical update has been completed. It's not a master plan update, it's just focusing on certain aspects, the technical aspects, just to provide the municipality with more information that's current to help it with its strategy for short-term and long-term servicing needs and its community for sanitary and water. Next slide, please. So, my goal is to just briefly mention what the study scope was, because it does not include things like a class environmental assessment, and then have just one slide that just gives an overview of the key conclusions for all of your key components for your sanitary and water systems. And then, then we'll focus on the water storage, because that's the one key capital work outcome of our study as to something that the municipality should pay attention to in the short term. And then we'll briefly talk about the wastewater treatment plant, because our study did not include an evaluation of that, but we'll just mention where we're at with its capacity and what, what should also be considered for your sewage treatment plant considerations for servicing the community. And then we'll all open up to questions. Next slide, please. So, first of all, I just want to point out that in our study, we did rely on other information from other consultants such as the growth study report that was prepared for you a few years ago, so we used those population projections. And we also relied on the township's GIS database, which, which we did spend fair bit of time updating your Mount Forest database for sanitary collection system and water, water main, just to bring it up to a more accurate state. And we thank Corey, Corey for all of his help too, and reviewing that and providing us with information that we required. And, and the outcome of that too is not only for a GIS database that has been updated, but there's some wall maps that Public Works, I presume, has on their walls that they can reference and mark up throughout the year when they get new information to make sure it can be updated again in the future. We, with respect to the water distribution system, we updated our model that we already had to, and use that to evaluate water distribution system conditions presently, but also for expansion to new areas of growth as well. We used it to evaluate your water storage alternatives. And we also then for well supply capacity evaluation, we reviewed the last five years of well pumpage records to come up with what your current demands are, so we could project what your future requirements are. For water storage, we completed preliminary evaluation work of three different alternatives, and we'll get into more detail later about that, and that included looking at probable costs for those alternatives. We reviewed your sewage pumping station records to see what the condition, the state of affairs are at your three main pumping stations to understand whether anything needs to be done at those stations to upgrade them in the next 20 years. And then we also provided numerous cost estimates for water distribution system and sanitary collection system replacements and future extensions into new growth areas. And that's presented in the report in a number of tables and, and figures. So again, what was not included in our, our work was any kind of class environmental assessment work. We did not follow the master plan process. And there was not, no, no detail of the evaluation of the wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, please. So, in terms of the general study conclusions, first of all, you have four large well supplies, 300 to 600 gallons a minute each. And so there's, you got, you have plenty of water. You don't need any additional water supplies for over 50 years, so you're, you're good to go there. And one thing I do note is that you're actually operating your well supplies overall at about 75% of how they're permitted and equipped, so even have more capacity potentially available. But again, you may, may need some hydrogeologists to take a look at them before you would start using them at a higher rate, but you're, you're good to go for your well supply. With respect to water quality, we didn't do any evaluation, but we just quickly looked at some of the information available, and there is no concerns with water quality or trends at this time that there, we're aware of. There are some wells that have higher sodium levels. So you have to have some public notification because of that, or nitrate at well five, just an indication of potential surface influences, but it's been deemed not a gooey well, so it's, it's good. And, and some supplies have some sulfides in it, but again, there, that's an aesthetic issue. So again, your water quality is not considered to be an issue at this present moment. With respect to water storage, of course, and we'll get into more details, that is the key concern for outcome of this study, that something should probably be done in the next few years for that. The water distribution system, we have mapping in our report that shows locations within the existing system, but also in growth areas for what should be replaced or what sizes should be used for extension into the growth areas. Through our evaluation work, we, we do want to point out that, given your current situation with the stand pipe, it has a certain elevation. And based on the, the head of water in that stand pipe, it would not be able to service one, one area of town, which is alongside Oxford Street and south of Oxford Street, if that's ever incorporated into your water distribution system, which it is not right now. It would require a booster pumping station to service any development that might occur there. With respect to sanitary sewer, again, like the water distribution system, we have some mapping in our report that, again, shows locations for those extensions to service new growth and the sizes that are recommended for that. We do note there are some areas where you cannot service them by gravity sanitary sewer, they'll need pumping stations. Some you're probably very familiar with, so there's the South Water Street Sewer Pumping Station, so it's already designed and approved, and the timeline for that is dependent on the developer of Eila. So, south of the river there. There's the subdivision interest beside the wastewater treatment plant that needs a pumping station. Lover's Lane, if it ever gets developed down along there, it would need a pumping station. Aggermont Annex, Annex Station, so the area north of the OPP station, that would require a pumping station. And then also, if it ever gets developed, property along Sligo Road, east of the tributary, so east of London Road, essentially the TD Smith property that would need a pumping station. There are some areas in town where gravity servicing can be provided as long as there's some, some filling, maybe up to, in some circumstances, a meter and a half, and two, two areas I, I think of are east of London Road, so properties along London Road could be serviced by gravity without any filling, but as you go further east away from London Road and north of Wellington Street, it would require some filling if, if they wanted to have gravity servicing for that. And the other area I'm thinking about is north of the high school. So, Urban Lidle Drive Sanitary Sewer was extended to service into that area to the north of the high school, that also would, some of that area would require some filling. So that's that point on the growth areas requiring a pumping station. When we evaluated your Cork Street and Durham Street pumping stations, they're, they're good for over 20 years, and what that means is, some point after 20 years, just the pumps would need to get upgraded when, when you need additional capacity and including any motor starters, whatever, to support that. They, they were designed, they're not that old. They were built in 2010, 2011. The, the wet well and other components associated with those works were designed for the ultimate catchment area, so, so the structurally, they're good for the ultimate service, the design conditions, but they just need the pumps replaced at some point beyond 20 years though. With respect to the last point about the wastewater treatment plant and North Water Street Sewer Pumping Station, they're, they're really, they were a combined project completed in 2008. And with respect to that, I just wanted to note that like me, they're, they're operating well as far as we're aware. There were two, two bypass events since it was constructed. One was in June 2017, one was in January of 2020. But those bypass events were extreme wet weather events, and you'll recall probably that there was like local flooding in Hairston and stuff like that, so they were extreme events. Other than that, there have been no bypassing reported that we're aware of, so. But, but there have been two, two events, but there's a lot of work done by the municipality since the last master plan report that have significantly reduced the number of sewage backups into, into people's basements because of these new pumping stations, Cork Street, Durham Street, upgrades to the, the main sewer line down Arthur Street that heads to the plant, so. So, so there, there's been a lot of efforts made by the municipality to, to improve the collection system, and, and that's made a significant difference to any problems experienced within, within the collection system. Next slide, please. Okay, so for the water storage, so there, there were actually three alternatives that were looked at. The first one was to demolish the existing stand pipe and eliminate its booster pumping station and replace it with a single new large elevated tank at the same location, although expanded location. It was assumed that the, the pool might be gone so that it could be used, a little bit larger property there. And so that was the first alternative. The second one was to keep the existing stand pipe, which is only 35 years old. And it's a booster pumping station, which is 13 years old. So, so maintain that, because they still have service life as long as they're maintained. And construct a second new elevated tank at the north end of the community in the industrial park. And then there was a third alternative that was also considered, which was to, again, demolish the existing stand pipe and construct a single elevated tank at the north end of town in the industrial park. But, but it was fairly quickly eliminated, the third alternative, because in the industrial park, it's about 14 to 60 meters lower in elevation than the existing stand pipe location. And the distribution system modeling indicated that that would significantly affect the performance of your distribution system and, and have problems providing fire protection to the southerly end of town if, if you would do so. So that one was eliminated fairly, fairly quickly from further consideration. So we came, came to two other alternatives. The one, a single elevated tank at the existing site with an estimated cost of 5.6 million. The other one is maintaining the existing storage facility and including the pumping station and to build a supplemental storage facility in the industrial park at a cost of about 5 million. You should keep in mind that 5 million does include water main to finish off industrial drive, loop it down Coral Lee to Main Street and tie it back in there, so it would service some new areas also, so there's some benefit to that 5 million expenditure beyond just expanding your water storage, so, so keep that in mind. And that 5 billion does include the cost to recode the existing stand pipe in the next year or so. We also did a high-level life, lifecycle analysis, just to look at these alternatives. And, and it would still point to alternative number two as being the more economical choice. I'll briefly just talk about pros and cons for the two alternatives that were further considered. And it's in, it's in our report. I'm just gonna highlight a few things first. So for the first alternative, a new storage facility, one new elevated tank at the existing site, you of course would have the advantage of just one facility to maintain in the long term versus the other one, you'd have two facilities to maintain. The advantage of alternative number two is that you have two storage facilities, so one can be taken offline, and you still have at least half of your storage online still, so there's an operational advantage to that. With alternative number one, you're gonna end up demolishing a stand pipe that's 35 years old and a pumping station that's 13 years old. So, and, and they really have more service life available. I do note that the previous master plan report was based on alternative number two, to proceed that way, and so that's why there have been, had been that investment of that, in that booster pumping station at the stand pipe, which is needed to fully use the capacity of that stand pipe, since the water's a column, not sitting up high in a, in an elevated tank. For alternative number one at the Grant Street site, it is, it is a relatively tight site within a built environment, and so talking and getting information from a contractor that builds these things landmark, there is, there is a premium cost to constructing it because of the, the situation of that site. And there'll also be a premium cost in the future for maintaining it, for recoding it, whatnot, so. So it does have a much higher cost versus if it was put on a greenfield site that wasn't in a built environment. Of course, with alternative number one, you can make it taller than existing stand pipes, so an advantage of alternative number one is that you can get higher pressures in your system as so desired, and you can also, if that area south of Oxford Street ever did get developed, then you wouldn't need a booster pumping station for that area, so that would be an advantage for that one. I guess with alternative number two, with a new elevated second tank up in the industrial park, you, you'll lose a little bit of land that's, that could have been used for an industrial sale. But you do have the advantage, you can, you can make sure of the property sized appropriately for the facility. You would have to build that tower essentially to the same height as the stand pipe, so that they can operate together properly. So that's, that's it, I think, for that slide. Okay, so water storage expansion timeline, when should you do it, I guess, is probably a key, key question of yours. And so first of all, I just want to note that, you know, what, what is the issue with the capacity? So, right on the stand pipe is 2,000 feet meters, and as, as I explained, your booster pump makes it fully available for use. In talking to Corey, and just based on your well supply capacity, In talking to Corey and just based on your well supply capacity. It it's not known that that booster pump has ever really kicked on and been used. It's essentially there for. You know, the what if situation, you have a big fire or something like that, or big big demand and it would get used, but it's. From my understanding, talking to Corey, it's never never been needed, it's only typically. Turned on once a month just to to make sure it's it's being maintained and in working condition. So it's that yours, your current storage is two thousand cubic meters, if we. Use the design information we've came up with in our our evaluation of your demands in your system. And use Ministry of Environment guidelines. You need about twenty nine forty two meters now, so you're deficient by nine hundred and forty. Two meters in fifty years, you would need forty four twenty cubic meters. Now, before I talk about what the advantage of the well, your surplus capacity of your well supplies can be. In terms of consideration for when to implement expanding your storage. I just want to know, as you can see, there's three colors and. In these, the diagram on the side that just shows that what you should have for storage in the next twenty and and fifty years, based on ministry guidelines. So the top storage component, for example, the eight hundred and forty four for year twenty twenty, that's called equalization storage. And and that's that's normally meant to help with your diurnal demand. So everybody gets up in the morning, has a shower, whatever, gets ready for work, there's a higher demand than versus other times of the day. So it helps to to deal with your peaks during your day. Assuming that your wealth capacity is only sufficient for your maximum day demand, and I hope I'm not getting too technical here. And then the next component like the fifteen hundred and seven, that's what the ministry would recommend you have available for fighting a fire. And then the bottom number five eighty eight, that's called the emergency stores, so it's really, it's twenty five percent of the total of the other two components. So it's really a safety factor and and it's meant for things such as if you have a. Prolonged power outage or something like that, then it can help to supply you with. Water during that period of time. So so getting back to the well supply surplus. Normally, when you would credit it towards reducing how much equalization storage you you have. And based on your well supply capacity, you you could. Ignore the equalization storage requirement until year twenty thirty one. But what that means, though, is that you you still be deficient. In either the fire storage component or the emergency storage component, you still won't have what the ministry recommends. But keep in mind, up until twenty thirty one, you still will have some well supply capacity. That's beyond even what you need for equalization storage and based on how things have operated. You know, we could, we could see the ministry or the municipality. Deciding to to wait for a few more years before implementing it, but but it is considered deficient. Based on ministry guidelines, so it's a matter of risk, so. You know, the ministry guidelines. We'll consider a few things in in their storage for level of risk. You know, the they they do base it on your firm supply capacity. So your largest well supply out of service, mechanical failure or whatever. You know, so that's that's another kind of a what if situation, if that happened, then you do you still have enough storage, that's how they're kind of looking at it. And. So, you know, there there's, yeah, it's a matter of risk that the municipality really has to take into consideration. And decide whether they're okay with that level of risk. There are things that you could consider if you want to mitigate the degree of risk. As I mentioned before, your well supply capacity, you're only using it at about seventy five percent. With respect to how how they're currently being operated, so you could make changes to to increase your. Actual online ability to pump water into the system. You could, in terms of if there's a power failure, a long term power failure, you could. Make sure, like, well, three is the only one that has permanent standby power, you could. Maybe provide a portable generator dedicated to well five or well six, for example. The standpipe has one booster pump, you could consider. A second pump there for redundancy in case the one doesn't work when it's really needed. And of course, you could do nothing and accept the the level of risk. And again, from in our opinion, you know, you could. You could wait a few years maybe, but but we think something should begin in a in a few years, because you you need probably two to three years to implement. Getting a new water tower online, you need to follow class environmental assessment. If you're doing alternate number two. If the water storage is going to actually end up being where it was suggested in in the previous master plan, it would be in West Gray. So there's some planning issues that you'd have to deal with for that, or you can simply put it in. You're in within the bounds of the municipality, but you'd have to think about that. You then, yeah, you need, so probably, you know, maybe six months for the class environmental assessment work. And then design and approvals, you know, that'll that'll take maybe six months for a design. You could do concurrent to the EA and then tendering construction, you need at least a year probably for that, so you you need two to three year. Timeframe for that, so. My suggestion would be that you'd want to consider starting the class environmental assessment process in a year or two, maybe. And keep in mind those, the class EA is good for ten years. So you do it now, and I would think that you would want to construct this new storage within the next ten years. So you wouldn't have to repeat the class environmental assessment, because it would be good for for ten years. So that that would be the the first step anyways, that we would recommend that you consider doing in the in the near future, in the next year or two. I think that's it for that slide, next slide. Allies, my brief presentation here, just real briefly about the wastewater treatment plant, so again, it was built in twenty. Two thousand eight, it's approved capacities twenty eight eighteen. And it's it's well under the capacity right now, there. Our study report was based, when we made some comments in there, it was based on the previous reserve capacity calculations. Completed last year, and so we've seen the newer calculations that Ray has completed. And so based on their new evaluation, there's significantly more. Units available than the last time it was calculated. So, you know, the, so it's going to be beyond twenty thirty one when you need to expand it. There is, we're still working on the co-treatment feasibility study for the leachate, which we hope to get finished the next. Month or so. And that that may, that may take up a year or two of growth from your your plant, so. You can keep that in mind, too. There is a term in your certificate approval for your plant that would allow it to go up to thirty five hundred cubic meters a day. There's this receiver impact assessment work that's being done by others and. So we we definitely would support that you keep working away at getting your plant rerated. And simply also because regulations don't tend to decline, they normally go the other way. Too, so it's probably better to try to get that resolved before there's new regulations that come in place that might make it tougher. To get that thirty five hundred cubic meters a day, so we would we urge you to continue with the process to. To try to get to that thirty five hundred cubic meters a day. Yeah, and that's it. Any questions that. Mayor, councilors, others would like to ask?
Hey, thanks Frank. Open up for questions. For Frank on that report. Mike?
Mayor Lennox, with your indulgence, I I was going to touch on this before we get into this, I I think we're, you know. Mayor, you spoke about this being informal, but I think we're also open to staff. After councils had an opportunity to ask questions, that other members of staff may have questions around clarity that that's open season today. Is M I, is that a fair comment?
Sure, that's fine. Any questions, comments? Mike, go ahead.
I I don't see any other else, and Frank, I don't want to leave you without asking you some questions, you and I have, you know, history around this stuff, so. I I just wanted to go back to to two items, I think, one is it relates to the water storage. As part of the required class EA, if we were to introduce a new water storage tower. It would be a schedule B, I believe, as I think you've told me that before. So in terms of that process, we would have to present alternatives as part of the class EA, is that right? And is there public consultation for a schedule B?
Yeah, you're right, yeah, there should be alternatives, and that's, and in in the end, our. Our study left it open that there's two two alternatives that seem to be. The feasible ones of the ones that were considered, of the three that were considered, so you do have. And we didn't finish our evaluation, right, because we we, it's not, because we weren't doing the class EA process and. And and so that that does need to to get done for for sure. One one thing I do want to note is that. The greenfield site, so alternative number two, for sure, needs a schedule B class environmental assessment. But our environmental planners were were telling me that for alternative number one, if you demolish the standpipe, build a new. Elevated tank there, even though the site might expand a little bit, it's still the same site and and so I'm told that. Likely you could get away with not doing a class environment environmental assessment at that location. I I would want to look into that a little bit more carefully, though, before I would say that's absolutely certain.
So Frank, my my follow up to that is, when we present the alternatives, what is the risk that the ministry says? Although we've identified our preferred alternative, that they say, no, you should go with the other alternative. Is there risk around that? I I don't know enough about the process.
Well, there's always risk. And it depends maybe on public comments, but but for alternative number two, I can't see there being much of a risk, it's a greenfield site up in an industrial area. You know, we've we've done enough evaluation and lots of these types of. Facilities that that I think the the risk would be very, very minimal, that the ministry would object. I guess the only issue that you'd have to deal with is, if you're going to be sneaking it over. The township boundary and putting in somebody, some of the municipalities jurisdiction, you have to deal with that issue, though, right?
No problem on that one, Frank, no problem. In Maryland, it was your indulgence, I just said another one, as it related to the. The wastewater treatment plant, the existing wastewater treatment plant and the North Water Street sewage pumping station. You talk about in in your presentation about additional capacity. My understanding is that the mechanical capacity exists that for both, it's just about rerating. That to allow for an increasing capacity, am I right about that?
Yep, it was designed to to be able to perform at the thirty five hundred cubic meters per day and. And we reviewed the pumping records for the North Water Street sewage pumping station and. For that, it was designed for like fifteen thousand cubic meters of a hydraulic capacity to pump it, but it's actually. Able to pump out like eighteen thousand cubic meters a day, so it's it's actually. Yeah, quite quite a bit more than what the original design intent was.
Yeah, I just thought it was worth clarifying for council, so when we're talking about adding capacity in Mount Forest at the wastewater treatment plant. It's not the same as what we went through in Arthur, so it it potentially, if we're able to go through the rerating. Process and the assimilative capacity and all those other things, there's lots of work, but it's not, it's not building. Necessarily to get to that thirty five hundred. That's all, thanks, Mayor Lennox.
Okay, I think Steve had his hand up, I'll go to him first, and then I see you, Dan and Matt.
Thanks, Mayor Lennox, I had one question about the class assessment as well, but Frank, you've answered that when Mike asked it. How much, and I guess maybe this is a similar question to what Mike asked, what kind of scrutiny is there? From the ministry, if we recode the existing standpipe and build another one, like, is there. Double the regulations or is it harder scrutiny or do they see it as something brand new? So it's not as scrutinized, I guess.
I I guess I don't quite understand your question then, so so are you asking if the ministry scrutinizes? The recoding efforts of the existing standpipe or?
Not really, no, I guess my question is, if we have two, does that mean that will? That it kind of doubles the scrutiny that the ministry puts us under for having two standpipes?
I I don't, like, I mean, you you maybe you're thinking, I don't know, environmentally, are you?
Yes, so, yeah.
Implementing the most environmentally best measure, is that what you're kind of thinking then, Steve?
Kind of, yeah, like, if, like, would they see it as why don't you just rebuild where you are instead of building another one, and now you have two? Like, do they take that in consideration? I I know I'm not making myself the most clear, but.
No, like, yeah. I think they would. You know, accept the evaluation that we completed so far, and of course, the class EA will will. Will take it to to a further degree, but. I I don't think they would object to it, because there's there's different operational advantages anyways to having two water storage facilities. Lots of communities have more than one. And and it it can be shown, you know, that there are certain disadvantages with, if you wanted to. Put put in this bigger elevated tank by itself, for example, alternative number one, there's there'd be some disadvantages with that one compared to the other one, right? So I I don't think there would be any strong objections from the ministry with having the two facilities that would be. Also have to be maintained for the next, you know, seventy five, eighty years.
Yeah, no, thank you, yeah, I think they complement each other having two for sure, so, thank you.
Just going to go to you, Matt, first, I haven't forgotten you, Dan.
Okay, thank, thanks, Mayor Lennox. Yeah, Mike, I guess I have two two questions, the first just, is is it a fair statement, Frank? That the technical update that was completed would provide a lot of, it would provide a lot of input into a class EA process. But the remaining part of the class EA process would really be the public and stakeholder consultation piece, is that, is that fair?
Yep, all the base information is there, like, if I would, I would suggest that. Like, for the class environmental assessment work, that's that would be required to finish it off, might be in the order of twenty five thousand dollars. And then probably you'd want to do the, like, geotechnical investigation as well, so that might be another seventy five hundred dollars or something like that. But yes, the the technical information has been done, it may, it may be. Refined a little bit, just to give a bit more support in in the class EA, but the majority of the technical evaluation work has been already completed. So it's going to be mostly of the public consultation.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yep, and then if I can, a second one, the the mass, the technical update that was done, Frank, did it give consideration to? The township accepting leachate from the landfill?
The only consideration that was given was just commenting on that, like, me looking at. It may take up to, you know, a year or two of growth out of the capacity of the of the plant. But but there's, what what other considerations were you thinking?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to, yeah, just trying to put that into context as far as just what the report looked at, so that's good.
Dan, go ahead. You're muted, Dan.
Sorry. Frank, thanks for the presentation. I wanted to ask you in regards to your thoughts on the mechanical ability. Of the pumping stations in Mount Forest, so. Starting with the North Water Street pump station that you're, did you look at the mechanical ability of those? Stations in regards to pump operation and how long that they should last or how long they. in regards to pump operation and how long that they should last or how long they should continue to pump at, you know, at capacity. At the North Water Street Pump Station, there's already been one of the large pumps has been rebuilt. The second large pump is neat, is in need of rebuilding. And the small pump, which does the majority of the work, has been rebuilt twice. So so that's at the North Water Street Pump Station. And at the Cork Street Pump Station, the pumps, there's two pumps in the in the wet well. And they've been rebuilt either three to four times since two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. And one new pump has been installed there. So I guess my question really is like, is the mechanical ability of these pumping stations okay? And are we gonna, or are we gonna have to be continuously rebuilding pumps within ten to fifteen years?
Okay, the study that we completed was strictly looking at capacities that you required at these stations. It didn't look at operational or maintenance issues at all. And I was not aware of the frequency of of the pump replacements that you were doing. So so, yeah, it wasn't really, it's not part of the scope of what we were looking, we were just looking strictly at the rated capacities of these stations and how it compares to what the current flow rates are. And of course, to look at the, like, I mean, do you know what the reasons are for the probable reasons for these pump failures then? Like, is that understood? Or is that is that something that needs to be looked into a little bit more closely?
Well, they've all been, I mean, when when they've been taken out to be rebuilt, they've been, you know, they've all been assessed. So you know, there's a list of of issues that have happened with each each particular pump. So it's just that that's just my concern is that, you know, we, the mechanical ability of these plants needs to be consistent and and operational on a on a steady basis. So I mean, if that's that's information that you, I obviously, you know, that's not what you looked at. But I mean, it's it's information that can be gotten, I guess, and provided. But it is, it is a concern moving forward when you're talking about, you know, more capacity. Your mechanical ability needs to continue to operate properly, too.
Yeah, for sure. I know for the North Water Street Pumping Station like that, Jockey Pump is is supposed to be the throwaway pump, right? So, you know, it's just supposed to turn away all the time. And then eventually it'll it'll crap out. And then you you throw it away and put a new one in, right? And then the big ones are supposed to be a lot more durable and last a lot longer. But you were saying how long did they last then?
Well, one of the large ones has just been rebuilt and it hasn't been reinstalled yet. And the second one is it probably close to the same condition as the first one when it was pulled out in January.
So so they've lasted since since two thousand and eight, when the when it was commissioned, that station?
Two thousand and eight.
Okay.
Which doesn't, which which doesn't seem to be, in my opinion, that long of time.
I know normally we design pumping stations so that mechanically, like the pumps you design for the twenty year design flow. So I guess the hope is that they would last for twenty years. But yeah, it sure will depend on conditions encountered. And and I don't know, yeah, without having more information as to what what caused the problems, I'm not sure. I can't really comment any further. But yeah, it was not part of the study. So that operations and maintenance issues.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Corey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lennox. Just a couple of things, just for for clarity. And maybe Frank misunderstood when he and I spoke, but as far as the booster pumping station at the base of the standpipe, it has never ran under normal operating conditions. You know, with with the system operating the way the way it is with no emergency situation, but it has kicked on in the event of a couple of large water main breaks. It's ran and ran as as it's supposed to. So just for clarity purposes, day to day, normal operating conditions, it does not run. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention that, you know, operationally, having two water towers is certainly very beneficial. It make it makes operations much easier. Recently, we had a water tower out in Arthur, out of the, one of the two of them was out of service for some some work. And I think operationally, aside from a few changes on our SCADA system, you know, it's very easy to manage. So I just thought I would mention that point as well, that it's all, you know, operationally, definitely a preferred alternative, having two water towers.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Frank, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. I do not have an intimate knowledge of the wastewater treatment plant. So I better clarify one thing. I know you know, structurally, the size of all the tankages and all that kind of stuff is designed for the thirty five hundred cubic meters per day, as far as I'm aware. But I'm not sure about the mechanical components like blowers, pumps and all that kind of stuff. So I can't I can't comment on on that part of it. And I don't know if yeah, again, we could find out, but I'm not sure whether or not Ray would have that knowledge at his fingertips. Or again, we could get back to you about that if you're, you need to know that information at this stage, or maybe Matt knows. But I can't, I can't say I know about those particular components.
Unfortunately, I can't off the top of my head. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know either. The one thing I would say is that township staff are working at looking at that rerating of thirty five hundred. And there's, yeah, we're getting we're getting some environmental studies for the for the river looked at to help us better understand what will be required for that thirty five hundred cubic meter upgrade.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. Bear with me for a second here.
So there is a report right after that, Mary Lennox, and I was going to put it up on the screen. Matt has highlighted some some things in it that he wants particular attention paid to. So in the and the resolution will be up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak to that report, Matt? You're muted, by the way.
Thanks, Mayor Lennox. Karen, if you can, if you can throw it up, we've actually covered a lot of material as part of the conversation. So the first, the first thing really I wanted to go over is just the resolution itself and kind of the way it's the way it's structured. So the resolution following Frank's presentation is really focused at just accepting the report, accepting Frank's presentation. And then it's really a decision point as it relates to the recommend the recommendation in in the technical update is to, basically, the strategy is to keep the standpipe existing and build a smaller secondary supplemental elevated storage tank in the industrial park area of Mount Forest. And with that resolution, I guess staff is just looking for reformation that the Mount Forest Standpipe Rehabilitation that was approved as part of the twenty twenty one capital budget, we would proceed with that. To date, we have not spent any money on that project kind of anticipating that this meeting was going to happen. And the last item in the in the resolution has to do with a twenty twenty design project that was approved for the Mount Forest Water Tower. And really, that's just to defer those funds, place them in an appropriate reserve, and that project will come forward in a future capital budget. So yeah, this report really deals with the water storage issue or strategy for Mount Forest. And you'll see the third report in today's agenda looks at sort of an overall strategy or prioritization of of some of these significant water wastewater projects.
So so if you get a mover and secander, then we can, Matt can go through the rest of the report for discussion.
Okay. So I'm going to go out on a limb and say that's moved by Steve and seconded by Sherry. And so do we want to open the floor for discussion or do you have more explanation, Matt, at this point?
My explanation was just going to be right at the very end of what I highlighted, Karen. So just that section there. If from a staff standpoint, I think our our big bullets for for recommending this was it's the second lowest capital cost. As Corey had mentioned, township staff prefer this option as it sees two water storage locations in Mount Forest, and that really does provide some flexibility and makes it easier to operate. Construction of a secondary tower also would be less disruptive to the system in general during the construction of the of the secondary take tank. Proceeding with the recoding, we think either later this year in the fall or early in twenty twenty two provides more timing flexibility for this for the construction of the the secondary tower. And the township recently, as far as thirteen years ago, invested significantly in that booster pump. And this alternative number two sees that booster pump remaining a an active component in the system. So I think all those were kind of touched on. So just wanted to provide a summary of those for discussion.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Yeah, any discussion on that recommendation? I can't see anybody, so please speak up. There we go. Thanks, Karen. Any discussion on that? Sherry, go ahead.
So my question is, is for the secondary standpipe that we're looking at, this doesn't really designate a piece of property. We're still trying to work that sort of that site out? Or are we looking to still have discussions with West Gray?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, good, good question, Councilor Burke. So the township does own some lands in that's currently outside of our boundaries that is in West Gray. And a lot of, at the time when they did the master plan back two thousand and three, I think Frank confirmed that that was part of the reason, or at least that's my indication, is that part of the reason that land was purchased for the opportunity for a water tower. So it's more land than than is needed, but a portion of it could be satisfied to satisfy the need for a secondary water storage facility. So there is some complication because it is outside of our urban boundary and things of that nature. But my understanding and some consultation that we've done through the planning side of things is that because of the purpose of it, the hurdles around the planning piece maybe aren't as significant as we might think they are. If if we're just building a water tower and it's serving purpose within our municipality, it can remain as part of West Gray. It doesn't necessarily that we would have to annex it or, you know, things of that nature. But I think there are other advantages that we want to consider with all of the lands that we own there. So that's probably happening at the same time. But I think the location of a water tower is suitable in those lands and can happen without it being too complicated.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor then? That's carried. Thank you. And we'll move on now to the water and sanitary master plan technical update for Arthur. We got Dustin and Ray. Welcome, gentlemen. I'm not sure who's doing what, but I'll let you guys sort that out.
I'll be, I'll be doing the presentation. I'd just like to say good afternoon to everybody. I'm glad to be here, especially on a on a sunny day like this. And I don't golf, by the way, so it's not a concern. The so basically, I'm here to provide the overview of the Arthur Technical Study that was completed last fall. And to answer any questions after that. Dustin Lidle is from Triton, and he's done a lot of the background work on this. So he's joining us today. And if I may have to rely on him if the cash, if the questions get too technical, maybe he can help me out with some of the details here. This technical study is to identify the infrastructure requirements for existing and future developments and to prepare a strategy to implement this infrastructure to accommodate the growth that's been identified. The one thing I should point out is that this study was done in twenty twenty with the report put out in September. So since then, there has been some additional information and some technical memos released or whatever to update this. But the general recommendations for the study are are still valid. And also, I'll try to maybe go over quickly or bypass some of the information that Frank was able to cover here regarding the scope of the study and you know, some of the technical information and that sort of thing, because it'll be basically the same for Arthur. Could I have the next slide, please? So basically, the the study was based on two different, I guess, growth, I don't know what you call them, patterns. So for all of the vertical infrastructure, which would be the the wells, the water tower, the the wastewater treatment plant, those sort of items, we use the Growth Management Plan and the numbers that were provided for it. It was done in twenty eighteen. And the reason for that is that most of these facilities depend on the overall growth. They're not, they're not generally site specifics. And that is the those are the numbers that we used for those items. Now, for the linear infrastructure, which would include the water mains and sewers, we've used development specific parcels. And as part of the Growth Management Plan, they had developed four development scenarios, stage one through four. And I think what you can see there on the slide, I think that is that is the fourth stage and shows all the development areas that were considered. Now, although the total population from the stage four may be higher than the Growth Management Plan, the fact that the development may happen in in, you know, in one area and maybe not in another, we had to look at them separately because the linear infrastructure like sewers and water mains depend on where the development is located. So that's, that's the way we've done our assessment. Next slide, please. Regarding the the water system. So just in case you're not that familiar with it, Arthur currently is serviced by two water towers and two municipal pump houses and three supply wells. The distribution system has nineteen kilometers of water main varying in size from a hundred millimeters up to three hundred millimeters. And there's various materials PVC is, any of the newer stuff would be PVC. The older stuff would be cast iron, and there's also some ductile iron in there. The existing operating pressures are from the mid forties up to eighty PSI. Next slide, please. On the water supply, as I indicated, there are two pump houses and three wells. Well, seven B, which is located at the the north end of Arthur, has a rated capacity of twenty two point seven liters per second. And Wells eight A and eight B are rated for twenty six liters per second each. It's located at the south end of town. But we have to also keep in mind that these two wells, because they're both coming to the same pump house, cannot be operated at the same time. So you don't get that that rating out of them. You have to use one or the other. So I think similar to Mount Forest, on the surface, there appears to be lots of water in in Arthur right now and in their system. But as a source capacity, as Frank had mentioned or whatever, you want to discount what you have for redundancy. So generally, you would want to take one of your well houses out of the out of the equation, and that would establish your firm capacity. And based on the the firm capacity that we have, the water supply is sufficient until twenty forty. However, there are a couple of things in there that need to be considered. First of all, the growth rate, that's depending on the growth rate that's been established by the growth management plan. And also, the the typical usage that was assumed. Now, if you have a a high use industry or something come into town, that can use up a lot of water, and that may change when you need your water. The other item that that needs to be considered is whether or not the standards for water quality, for drinking water quality change. If that changes, then your existing wells and, you know, how they treat it, and if they're able to treat it, that might change things, and that may push the need up for for a well sooner than that. So I'd also like to point out that that, you know, getting a well online, a new well online, it's a very long, complicated process. Therefore, we're recommending that the township to complete two tasks at this time or in the near future. The first one is an update to the well exploration plan. From what I understand, that is already underway, and I believe that Matt's looking for some additional funding to continue that into, I believe, test well exploration. The other item that we're recommending is an evaluation of the existing municipal wells in detail, like the pump house. Sorry about that. Regarding the regarding the a new well, we provided a cost range here of three to five million. That's that's quite a range, but we don't know a lot of details yet. And I think that once you have more information from the well exploration program and you know how much water you have and where the water is and what the quality is, that'll go a long way to providing a bit more information on that. I mean, bringing a bringing a well online, it can be relatively inexpensive. And again, I mean, the lower end of that range. If you can find a good quality source and lots of water, and it's near the existing infrastructure. However, it can be very expensive if you can't find good quality or it needs a lot of treatment, or you can't find the quantity and you have to put in multiple smaller wells. Or if you have to go further out of town and and extend water mains to provide that. And as I indicated, I think the well exploration program that's ongoing, that will go a long way to resolving that and getting us some more details on that. Next slide, please. Regarding water storage, there are two storage towers currently on the Arthur system. The first is a small multi-leg tower located in the downtown, which was commissioned in nineteen thirty two. The second facility is a Sveroid Tower. It's located off Smith Street towards the north end of the town. It was commissioned in nineteen sixty seven. The existing storage volume is considered adequate until twenty twenty thirty, when considering the surplus water supply within the system and the decommissioning of the multi-leg tower. The updated calculation is provided in the February twenty twenty one memo, but it comes to the same conclusion regarding the the timing for that facility. The study had looked at identified two options for increasing the storage. The first option was to retain the existing Sveroid Tower and to add a new smaller tower. The second option was to decommission the existing towers and add a larger tower. Option one. Sorry. Option one, the existing multi-leg is at the end of its service life and would not be feasible to extend its life. A recent study has been done and Matt has shared that information with me. It is expected to be decommissioned in the near future. The Sveroid Tower is well into its service life and is due for an extensive maintenance work, which is expected to be close to a million dollars, I believe. And and that would have to happen, I think, in the near future, within the next five to ten years. Existing towers operate at a maximum elevation of five hundred meters. This operating level, where it is currently, is is not sufficient to service all of the future growth areas that were considered. Additional additional service areas to the northeast of the system, a new tower would need to be at least ten meters higher to service them. And the problem with with this option also is that, well, I guess necessarily a problem, but a complication is that if you're going to have two towers within the same zone, they have to be have to be at the same operating level. So if we were going to put a second power, say, elsewhere in the system to be able to to service the higher areas, then it would have to be at a different operating pressure, and then you'd have two operating zones, and you would have to separate the system into into two zones using pressure reducing valves and require a booster pumping station to do that. Having two pressure zones does complicate the the operating and maintenance costs of the system. And so that is a disadvantage of that option. Option two, the existing towers, both towers would be decommissioned. A new tower would be built with a higher operating level, which would increase the pressure across the system. And the location hasn't been confirmed yet. However, we would suspect it would be somewhere in the northeast of the system, maybe in an industrial, so that it can provide good fire flows for that area. The sizing of the tower, preliminary sizing, we were expecting it to be two thousand cubic meters. And we're vision that would that would serve us to about twenty fifty. The tower size could be increased to provide a a service into the future. However, oversizing the tower could have operational issues such as water quality issues or icing. So a little bit reluctant to size it too too large. The other reason for not maybe sizing it too far into the future, and I think this this has already been brought up earlier, is that having a second facility on the system is easier if easier to operate if you need to do maintenance on a single tower. So with a smaller tower, it may give us the the advantage that in the future at you know, twenty fifty or something like that, you could consider a second facility, and that would you could also size it with more accuracy further into the future, but in the meantime, you wouldn't have the extra cost of you know, laying out a an extra, you know, the extra money for the bigger facility if you don't need it for another thirty years. So the recommendations regarding the storage is that we update the storage requirement annually as part of the reserve capacity calculations. We did that for the twenty twenty one reserve capacity calculations just to update it with the with the new group growth that's online and the and the maximum day demand for water that all plays into that storage requirement. The other requirement is that we would suggest that a class EA be initiated in twenty twenty five to confirm the preferred alternative, the sizing, the location, and the timing for the storage. And as I indicated before, I think an estimated build time for the new tower would be twenty thirty. Next. Next slide, please. So generally, the the sizing and capacity of the existing mains are adequate to support growth. The township is continually replacing older mains, typically the cast iron as part of their road reconstruction program. The report identifies part of the distribution systems that need to replace due to age. Extensions to the system are also would be completed as part of the future development to service that development, depending on where it occurs and when it occurs. A trunk water main network also needs to be identified to allow it to be implemented as part of the development in road reconstruction projects. This would be dictated by development in the location of the new water tower. Next slide, please. Regarding the sanitary system, Arthur currently serviced by wastewater treatment plant, two sewage pumping stations and a collection system. The collection system includes over nineteen kilometers of sewers bearing in size from two hundred to four fifty millimeters and has four kilometers of force made. Next slide, please. The wastewater treatment plant just underwent a phase one expansion in twenty twenty to increase the capacity from fourteen sixty five cubic meters a day to eighteen sixty cubic meters a day, which resulted in approximately three hundred and forty six equivalent residential units being added to the reserve capacity. The recently completed twenty twenty one reserve capacity calculations indicated that there were three hundred and forty two reserve capacity units left of uncommitted reserve capacity. Some of this, from what I understand, has since been allocated. Based on the growth management plan, the additional this additional capacity is expected to be used up just beyond twenty twenty five. However, depending on the actual sewage flows and the township's allocation policy, it may last longer. Review of the annual reserve capacity calculations will provide guidance related to the need for the additional capacity. The phase two expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, it'll increase the capacity to twenty three hundred cubic meters, which will provide an additional three hundred and eighty five units approximately. Construction of phase two is expected to take two years. Therefore, it should be started within the next four years, depending on the results of the annual reserve capacity calculations. Infiltration and inflow is a significant component of the sewage flows. We estimate that it is probably in excess of fifteen percent, which equates to about two hundred and forty reserve capacity units. Eliminating the I and I in the existing system is difficult, but I think the the township should try to reduce to the extent feasible. I realize it's tough when you don't know exactly where it's coming from, but they should you know, maybe update their infiltration program and have a look at this. I think it's much easier going forward with future with the future system. It's much easier to control how much infiltration there is in the system. I think that when you have developments or you're doing road reconstructions, I think proper inspection and testing of the sewers as part of the construction will go a long way to reducing the flows, the per capita flows going forward. Regarding the sewage pumping stations, the Well Street Sewage Pumping Station has has sufficient capacity. There is no additional flows being routed to it as a result of the growth. The Frederick Street Sewage Pumping Station will need to be expanded, but that's going to be completed as part of the phase two wastewater expansion. Next slide, please. We had completed and we'd updated the sanitary sewer computer model to confirm the hydraulic capacity of the various with the various development scenarios considered. Generally, the sizing of the existing mains are adequate to support the future growth. However, there are some parts of the system that are maybe reaching capacity at full buildout. These areas of the system which are identified in our report may require some flow monitoring in the future, just to confirm what the actual flows are. It's also very important when you're reviewing future developments that the that the routing of the flows and where the where these flows are being directed is considered. This this will be done as part of the development review process, just so we can make sure that we make full utilization of the existing sewers and their capacity. Extensions of the system will occur to accommodate future development. Typically, as part of the development, it'll be extended to service them. Next slide, please. So in summary, I think it's it's important to assess the infrastructure adequacy adequacy to support not only the existing users, but the potential growth. This allows for planning and scheduling and funding of the major infra in in infrastructure projects. This study identified several next steps, including the well exploration program, the well supply and storage assessment through the annual reserve capacity strategy, the planning of trunk water main network based on future development, on the wastewater treatment capacity assessment would also depends on the annual reserve capacity calculations and the strategy it provides. Monitoring of trunk sewer capacity in identified areas is something that should happen in the future also. And I think that I think there's always already mentioned that should consider these major projects in your development charges updates. Given the the recent development pressure in this area, it's recommended that this technical review be updated on a regular basis, maybe every five year intervals to assess the impact of the recent development on the infrastructure and thereby allowing the current recommendations and timing horizons to be confirmed and updated as required. I'd like to thank you for allowing Triton to be part of this project. If there are any questions, I would take them now.
Thanks, Ray. Steve, I see you got your hand up already.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. I didn't know if you wanted to open it to staff first, like Mike had done the last time, or is it oh, see, in their fair game?
We'll let the early bird get the worm this time, Steve. Go ahead.
All right, thanks. Why don't we have for the next five or ten years, it's literally for the next generation. And we have to do this, obviously, so that that generation is on solid footing where we are right now, so that they can be where we are in the future. So yeah, what we're what we're doing today kind of echo when we started this meeting Andy and and Mike was, you know, what we do now affects the future. So with that in mind, just with Arthur and having heard what we heard about Mount Forest, I guess his question is more for you, Ray. Can we not keep the and I'm sorry, I call it the big onion in the north end of in the north end of Arthur, but could we not keep that? The big onion, tear down the small one and build a new tower where the old small legged tower begins or is right now, and is there has there been any cost? Or any research into the cost of doing that at all? And then I have another follow up question after this.
I I think that early on in the reviewing the storage locations, the the downtown location wasn't a preferred location. My understanding is quite a small site. And the other reason why it isn't necessarily a good spot to have it is that if the industrial area who tends to require the higher fire flows is up in the north end, then having it in the downtown or whatever really isn't the best the best location for it. So that was sort of the reasons why that replacing a tower in that location wasn't preferred.
Okay, thank you. It's great to continue, Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
So in your presentation, you're saying a new smaller tower that would have a lifespan of thirty years is kind of the preferred alternative. So I'm not sure the understanding was like Mount Forest goes to two to accept like, you know, the the population increase that's coming. Arthur goes down to one, and then on page four of your report, it says basically the population of Arthur is going to be doubled from twenty four hundred to about forty seven hundred by twenty forty five, which is only twenty four years away. So the council and the residents and the township of that time and day in the future would probably have to go through the same processes we're going through now, only twenty four years from now. So I guess the question I have for that is can we still keep the big onion and still have So I guess the question I have for that is, can we still keep the big onion and still have two towers going? Whether it's in the industrial area where it's, like you say, where the industrial companies use more water, and would that not perhaps allow a longer life between the two existing towers and rehabilitate the big onion as it is now? That kind of, kind of doing what we're doing in Mount Forest on the Arthur level?
Just to clarify, preferred option would be actually a larger tower. So if we were going to go with the first option, it would be complete. It would be to, to keep the, the onion, as you call it, and put up a small water tower. And but the option or preferred option would be to decommission the onion and provide a larger tower. So there are, I think the main, the main reason for the preferred option is primarily the two-zone situation that we have here. So we have quite a few areas in the future development that will have pressures around forty PSI or around that, around that area. And so unfortunately, if you build a new tower, it has to be both the existing tower and the new tower, unless you're going to separate them into pressure zones, they have to be at the same elevation. So, and you can do that. Lots of, lots of systems have multiple zones, but it does complicate the, the process. And I think the reason why we're going or why we're recommending at this point having the single pressure zone is that this new tower that you put up is going to be here for a long time, probably fifty years. And if you put it at the lower level, then you won't have the opportunity in the future when you build another one to put it at a higher level, unless you create that other zone. And so the thought was that if we can put up a tower, a new tower, and we can size it and put it at an elevation or whatever to go forward for twenty-five or thirty years, then in twenty-five or thirty years, you could, you could have a look at your needs at that point, and then you could put in the second tower, and then the benefits of having two towers on a larger system that was talked about in Mount Forest, you would realize them at that point. I realize you lose some of the cost efficiencies of having to put up a second power maybe in thirty years, but you're also saving some money now, and you don't have to make a two-zone, two-zone system that's going to require booster pumping stations and additional operational maintenance costs.
Okay, I'm going to go to Matt first, Steve. Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Mayor Lennox. And just to further on, on Ray's comments, Councilor McCabe, I think from a staff standpoint, we really do like the two-tower system, but exactly as Ray's describing, the limitation of having to match that existing elevation with a, with a new tower, sort of, we, we miss an opportunity at that point. So realize it's, it's certainly confusing that Mount Forest, we'd be going to two towers, Arthur, we'd be going to one, but the, the idea of the pressure zones also adds complexity to operating the system. So what those would be is like manholes with mechanical equipment underground that would have to be maintained, and we'd need a couple different, different locations where we would have those, those pressure, pressure regulating valves underground. So I think that's why we ultimately arrived at the recommendation that you see before you as the one tower, just for some additional clarity from a staff standpoint.
Thanks, Matt. Steve, did you have another one?
Yeah, and thanks, Ray and Matt for that. And not to beat a dead horse, could the, could the onion be rehabilitated to a higher pressure that, that would match a new tower? If, if the new tower was built today, and what would that entail? Or is that kind of prohibitive?
I, I think that'd be prohibitive. I'd never seen that done. I, I mean, I think it would end up being something like a standpipe, except you would have, so you'd still have a pump at the bottom with all your water up top. I, yeah, I've never seen that done. So I, and the one thing to consider also, I know that the, that the onion has some useful life, but it is fifty, I think fifty-four years old. So, and there is some, some significant expenditures that are going to need to happen to it in the next decade, like a million dollars. So I guess you have to ask yourself, is that money better spent on a longer-term solution that's going to help you or? And, and these are all things that we sort of considered. I mean, I recognize that that tower still has some useful life in it, and you, you certainly want to get as much out of your infrastructure as you can, but I'm also looking at if you're handcuffing yourself for the future too much by creating a two-zone system when, when this system can be a one-zone system at actually a higher pressure, which would help some of the existing users also, not to mention just the future.
Great. Thank you, Ray.
Other questions, comments? Corey, go ahead.
And I'm sure it's been clarified already, but again, we, operationally, we would love to see two water towers in Arthur, but I think in Mount Forest, we identified one small area of town that may require a booster station. Should we go to the two towers there in Arthur? A lot of the development, the future development would require not just one area town. The, the east side of town where there's developments planned, the north end of town where there's future development planned. So it's, it's multiple areas of town. You know, I wish that we could find a way to say that pressure is going to be sufficient operating at, at the level that we have right now, not just pressure, but fire flows as well, that we have sufficient fire flows and that we could, you know, ultimately, I think we would prefer to build it, to have two towers, but given the fact that we need to increase the pressure and the fire flows, that's what's going to make it very difficult to do. So the only way to have really two, two towers would be, you know, build two towers at a higher, higher operating level, and they have to match, they have to be the same operating level.
Ray, go ahead.
To, to Corey's point, I mean, the, I think this also goes into the, the sizing consideration for the new tower. I think as part of the EA, maybe this issue can be looked into a little bit further as to how far out you want to go with the planning on this, because if there is a desire to have two towers on the system, obviously, you know, you don't want to use up, or you don't want to put all of your eggs in one basket here and have one huge tower right now, and then you're basically stuck with that for the next eighty years. This, I think, would give you an opportunity that maybe you can reevaluate in thirty years or forty years, when you, you know, if you need another tower, then at least you have an opportunity as Arthur grows and gets bigger, and then two towers would be needed as it gets to be larger.
Would that mean the pressure would have to be even higher in thirty or forty years?
No, that, that tower would match, the, would match the new tower that's going up now. It would just give you more volume if you needed it in the future. And, and also, it could be put in another part of town so that your fire flows could be spread out more. If you need, if you don't have sufficient, let's say this tower goes up in the, in the northeast end where all the industrial is, but let's say you get some more higher fire flows down in the south end, you know, thirty years from now, apartment buildings and that sort of thing, or other, another industrial area, then you could put a tower down there, and then that would give you fire flows at both ends where you need it.
So, so I'm sorry, Andy, if I could keep going. So the pressure of a new tower, you don't see that changing in the next forty-five years. Is that like the optimal pressure or like, I'm just asking because I don't know?
Yeah, basically, it goes by the topography of the ground. So when you look at the topography as the ground, the, obviously, the higher areas in town are going to give you lower pressure because it floats on the tower. And so we've, we've looked at sort of the topography around town in the development areas, and, and we've come up with a, with an, with a, an elevation that we feel you can service it with. Now, obviously, when you're looking at an operating level, you have to also look at the low parts of town because you can't have the pressures too high. And so with, with the operating level that we're recommending, we can stay within the, the requirements, keeping pressures below ninety, ninety-five, which isn't ideal, but most of the town, very, very a small portion of the town would be at that outside, would be at that pressure. And then, you know, on the other end or whatever, then you would have most of the area, you know, the minimum pressures would be, you know, in the high forties or low fifties. So that's, that's a lot better than having, you know, the high thirties or, or low forties. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks, Mayor. Ray, if we were to decide on the new single tower in the north, north end of town, in order to complete a class EA, do we need to own the land that the tower go, go like the specific land that the tower goes on, or is that something that can be done sort of in an envelope of land, or I, I just, I don't, I don't know?
I think that you are going to need for the new tower site, you're going to need a schedule B class EA. Now, the exception to that maybe, and, and I don't know off the top of my head, but I just sort of, if it was done as part of a, a development review, sometimes, you know, a lot of facilities that are within a subdivision, they don't have to go through their own class, class EA, because they, the development review, the planning process is the public process. So that might be the exception to it. If, if a development was to happen and you were going to have the tower site identified in there and the purpose, then you may not have to do any EA, but I'm not positive about that because I've never had that situation. So.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I guess what I was asking though is, do we have to purchase the land before we do the EA? Or could we do like a more generally for a, a general area and, and then procure the land?
I, I think that generally you would want to have your site picked out if you're going to do the EA, because that'll be kind of your last public kick at it. So I, I don't know. Again, I don't know for sure, I'd, if, you know, if you have sort of a, a ten-acre parcel identified and say somewhere on there, maybe that's good enough. I don't, I'd have to look into that and see.
I would think you'd probably want to have the land acquired just from a, a purchasing and bargaining power perspective, if we're purchasing land from somebody and we include their land in the EA, and then we go to try to negotiate purchase, so we might not have nearly the same bargaining power that we might have otherwise. So.
Oh, true.
I think from a very practical standpoint, that might be, might be important to have the land acquired or at least optioned first.
Unless it's, you know, part of a development, if it's part of a development area or whatever, then that might be part of the planning process and negotiation.
Right. Mike?
Connected with that, Ray, and this might be premature, maybe it's better for Jim. Is there advantages that, because we're going to need to procure land for a tower that we have tower and source kind of in the same location if we're looking for an alternate source as well?
Typically, I don't think there is much advantage to that. There is some cases, maybe, I don't know, I've seen where they put them in the same, the same block of land, and then you can use your tower as your contact, your chlorine contact and for mixing and, and those sorts of items. But generally, there isn't a lot of advantage to putting them on the same site.
Other, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, Ray, the, the township sanitary allocation policy, having an upper limit of fifteen percent, how does that, how does that impact the, the master, the technical update that was completed?
I think that, that wasn't, that policy wasn't worked into our numbers. We use the growth management plan for that, but obviously, that will have a huge impact on it, I think, because as I understand it, if you're only going to allocate fifteen percent of the uncommitted reserve each year, then obviously, the development is going to take a lot longer to come online, and so that will definitely have an effect on that. You know, with, with that policy also, I mean, I guess, so if you put phase two online, then all of a sudden you can allocate more, even if you don't need that sewage right now, but it, it'll affect that. So I think that's definitely some, something that has to maybe be worked into this, and I think that's why I mentioned that, that we had used the growth management study and the numbers for growth reflected in that, but that policy, allocation policy will definitely affect that. Thanks.
Darren, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Ray, in locations where we have unacceptable water pressure and we would receive an application for draft plan of subdivision, would would you be recommending to the township not to endorse draft plan approval until such a time as a new water tower was built or, or maybe endorsed, but put the land in a holding zone?
I think that would really depend on where the pressures were. I mean, there are, you know, if the pressures were manageable, you know, I, I think I would say if they were in the low forties, mid forties, something like that, that, that may be acceptable in a, you know, in a, in the short term or the interim, but also depends on fire flows. So if it was an industrial area and stuff, that would have a big impact on the, on the fire flows, but we'd have to look at it specifically, but there might be some opportunity. If you know that a project is going to be coming online, you know, within a few years or something like that, that's going to rectify the situation, then maybe that would be a, you know, a manageable strategy, at least they can get started with their development and stuff, as long as you know the project's coming.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, I think the, the resolution for this one is really after the, the whole report and Arthur, right, Karen?
Yeah. Yes, we're doing the, and Tim Baxter's doing his report next, and then the report. So let me know when you're ready to start screen sharing.
Okay, so I think we'll move to Jim. If you're ready, we can have your presentation now, please.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Jim Baxter, and I work with RJ Burnside down in Guelph, and, and we kind of focus on the wells. So we've heard a mention by Frank up in, in Mount Forest and by Ray and in Arthur. And so I just, we've, we've put together a preliminary assessment of, of water well exploration in Arthur, and that reports in the package, and, and I'm just going to run through how we, you know, put that information together. It's really, I refer to it as a desktop study, it kind of pulls together all the existing information that's available and, and, and then kind of charts a path forward for how we can move forward with exploration as opposed to just throwing darts on a wall and, and listening to rumors of, of, you know, water coming out of the ground in different, different, different locations. So, next slide, the, so first step in, in these desktop studies that we do is really to look back at, you know, where we've been and what's been tried, and, and there's been a fair bit of work in Arthur related to looking for water. I think Arthur is jealous of Mount Forest at, at the, the, the way things are in Mount Forest. You know, they have four wells, they make lots of water, and, and they've been there for quite a long time, and, and you know, it, you know, it just doesn't seem, seem fair. But, but in any case, back in nineteen thirty, the first well was drilled, and we heard from Ray that the tower went up there in nineteen thirty-two. That's a, that was a, I think it was a one-year project drilling that well, and, and it was, you know, six hundred feet deep, two hundred meters, that, you know, quite a, quite a, a structure. And unfortunately, it, it, we'd only produced, you know, less than seven liters per second of water. And then over the next few years, like they, they used that well, I mean, it, it was a good source of water, but it was, it was a little bit poor quality, very, very hard. And so over the next few years, up until nineteen seventy-seven, wells two, three, four, five, and six were drilled, and they were all attempts to find the wells that Mount Forest has, right? Like the, 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 they were bedrock wells to various depths. They were large diameter wells, you know, the hope that you're going to get it when you're when you're drilling in the bedrock, which is what these all are. Uh, you're looking for a fracture in the rock that's going to produce water. And, and, uh, so the hope was that you drill a bigger hole, maybe you get more fractures and things like that. So unfortunately, uh, none of those wells were more than seven liters per second. And then in 1984, uh, well, seven was drilled and it was successful in, in getting water from the overburden. So the overburden is that layer of material above the rock that's maybe 40 or 50 meters thick, uh, in, in Arthur and, and, uh, it, it has become a really good source of water. Um, yeah. So you can flip to the next slide there, Karen. That's, that's good. Oh, that's good. Um, and so well seven, uh, this is a shot, uh, kind of looking south at, at, uh, well seven B, uh, just on the north side of the river there and, and highway nine to the south. And, uh, that well, uh, there was an initial well drilled in 84. Uh, and it was replaced in 98 with well seven B, a 10, 10 inch well and, and it makes 22 liters per second. And in fact, it can make much more than 22 liters per second. So capacity at this site is, you know, if you were to drill a, a second well, as we suggest here in one of the bullets, any pump house, it's, it's nice if you can have two wells and the pump house so that if one well goes down, you know, your, your, your pump, uh, has a problem with the motor or something physical fails in the well, you've got that other well to, to provide a backup. So at this site, we only have the one well. So we've kind of identified that as, you know, it'd be nice if we had a second well at that site. So then in about 2004, well, in, in a period of 2002 to 2005, uh, the well eight site was developed. And you can go to the next slide there, Karen. And this is a, this is a view of the well eight, uh, pump house looking to the north and on Jones baseline. And, uh, there was a bit of, you know, there were, there were three or four test wells that were drilled uh, in, in the search for the water, uh, for this site. We actually looked closer to town, you know, uh, we, you, you ideally, you'd like your sources to be close to where it's getting used because you don't, you know, it takes energy to transfer it and, and it costs a lot of money to run pipelines. So, but unfortunately, this, this turned out to be the, the closest, uh, most efficient, uh, source of water from this area. So really you've got the, the source of water, well seven on the, on the west side of town. And then you've got the source of water from well eight on the east side of town. And, and, uh, as mentioned previously, the way the permit for well eight is set up is you can use A or B, but you can't use them together. Now, the, the important thing to note here is that if you wanted to use those two wells together, you could. There's enough water in that aquifer to pump both of those wells together. But in order to get approval to do that, you'd have to do some testing. But, but the pumping that's done from well eight is, is a very, you know, we're just making a small dent in, in the, in the available production. So we've got really good capacity from the well seven and well eight sites. The biggest issue, uh, would be the high manganese at well eight. And, and, uh, as mentioned, the standards get, uh, for drinking water get changed occasionally. And, and, uh, manganese is high on the list for, uh, the Ministry of the Environment in, you know, Ontario. And, uh, the, the levels at wells eight A and eight B are very close to what they're considering to be their maximum. So that's something that could, you know, make the capacity at this site not quite so good if, if, if the water quality isn't suitable. So that's the existing sources. So what we talked to Matt and Corey about, uh, was, you know, where else are there other sources that, that could potentially help out the town, you know, with this quality issue on one hand, but also just another source of water. And, uh, you know, with the idea that you've got development planned at the very north, north corner of the community. And, uh, so we started looking a little bit more at the, you know, what, what information has been found out in the area of Arthur since the last time exploration took place for wells eight A and eight B. So, uh, maybe next slide. So this is just a, a cross section of Southern Ontario. It's, uh, just kind of shows you where Arthur is. Uh, you've got the Niagara Skartman, you've got this, this, uh, you know, the pink there is, is, is the bedrock. And, and then you've got overburden, just kind of it's glacial overburden on top of that bedrock. And, uh, you know, you've got, um, you can see, you know, Orangeville, Moraine to the east, they have wells in that nice yellow deposit on the top of the mountain and, and Waterloo, Moraine to the south and, and west. And, and those Arthur wells that we, I just finished talking about are in that kind of maroon layer right at the bottom, just sitting on top of the bedrock. So that's the, that's where we're looking. And so really the bedrock is, is the biggest area. You can see that that maroon layer kind of pinches out to the north of Arthur. And, and that's exactly what we find. Uh, well, five that used to be at the, uh, at the water tower on the west end of town. Uh, it, there was no sand and gravel there. So, you know, as you move to the north, we find that those, those, uh, aquifers that supply well seven and eight, uh, pinch out. So what we do is we look at all the wells in the area. So next slide. So this is a, this is a map. There's, I mean, don't try and look at the numbers or anything, but in general, all the dots, each dot is a well. And the purple dots are bedrock wells and the green dots are, are overburden wells. And so if you live in the area of Arthur, but out in the country and you have your own well, probably your well has a, a record on the database for wells. And we go through all those well records. It's a, it's a record that's submitted to the Ministry of the Environment when each well is drilled. The well drillers have to do that as part of the, the drilling program. And, uh, so there's a lot of really good information about the geology, uh, that's been drilled and how much water and how deep and all that kind of stuff. So those records are available for all the old wells that we did and, you know, that we worked on in Arthur originally. And, uh, then they're also available for, um, you know, some of the, some of the farms in the area, uh, look to use more water for, you know, dairy and sometimes irrigation. Uh, and, and so we look for those higher capacity wells and, and you can see that we've drawn a couple of lines and, and made cross sections through the well. We use the wells to kind of see what's below the ground. So, um, next slide, I guess, Karen. So this is a cross section. So this, this, this is like cutting through the cake. It was my son's birthday yesterday. He got a shot, his, his COVID shot on his birthday. And, uh, uh, so we're looking at the cake here. And, and the, the light brown at the top is the overburden and the bedrock below is, uh, you can see it. So, you know, you see in the middle there, it says wells one and four. Those are the wells that have been abandoned that used to be used in town before wells seven and eight were available. And you can see well eight up in the light brown material that's, that are a lot shallower. And then in and amongst between them and beyond to the north, we, you know, put the, put the existing wells and, and, uh, we look at the formations that were drilled, how much water they made and, and that sort of thing. And, and based on that, we, we think of, okay, where do we think we could drill where we need additional information, A, and B, where there's potential for additional water? And, and, uh, so we, uh, go to the next slide, I think, Karen. So one of the things, one of the other things we did with it, like I'll go back to the, I think I'm going to go back to that cross section again. But, but if you look at this map, this is a source protection map that Kyle Davis probably, uh, pulls out of his, his repertoire every once in a while. And, and, uh, you know, this, this shows the wells in the surrounding area. So all the wells in all the surrounding communities draw their water from the bedrock. Um, and, and there's significant capacity wells. The, the bigger those, those capture areas likely, the bigger the, 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 the bigger the water supply. Uh, and, and, uh, so we, we look at, we looked at those studies to kind of build on those a little bit because, you know, like Ferguson and Laura did a big model and it actually included some of the areas south of Arthur. So we use that information in our study. There's also a study done uh, over by Grand Valley and in between Grand Valley and Orangeville. There's lots of holes that have been drilled in the past 20 years since uh, the last exploration was done. And, uh, it really provided us with some really good information. So if, but if we go back to, to the, that, that cross section, the previous slide, yeah, the, so we've put some question marks on that, that, uh, you know, that cross section. And one of the things that we thought about was in the area of wells eight A and eight B down on the Jones baseline, south of town, there's a, that really nice aquifer of sand and gravel. And we stopped at it because it made so much water. It was just, we thought this was great. You know, we've, we've got two municipal wells that probably could produce twice as much water as they're actually pumping right now. And we didn't look at the bedrock underneath. Uh, part of that is a cost thing. The deeper you go, the more it costs. And, and when you've already, when you come across a, a formation, you, you, uh, that, that's going to be good, then, then that's considered to be a, a good source. So you, you know, we went with that. But considering the issue with manganese and, and the, the idea that maybe we don't have a ton of information in, in that area, uh, we consider that bedrock as a potential area of additional information. And, and part of the reason for that is if you to go south, work your way south along highway six, the, the, um, the domestic wells start to produce water as you go south. You know, the, they, they become higher capacity wells. So at some point between Arthur and Fergus on highway six, the, the bedrock becomes more permeable and produces more water. So that, that's one area that we're thinking. You know, we are still pretty close to Arthur. So if we were to drill that bedrock and, and come back and say, look, there's just, there's that, that bedrock just does not produce, I would not be shocked. But at some point to the south, it does get better. So, you know, it, it's a, we're, we're a good kilometer or two south of town. And it is worthwhile to, to be searching, uh, for that source in that area. So that's one area that we've identified. Um, you can go, well, actually I'll stay on this cross section, uh, see the two small question marks are, I'll just remember those two question marks and then go to the, move forward a couple of slides. So these are, there's a map of, of town. It's just kind of a zoomed in picture of, of our map from earlier with dots for the well locations. And we've, and I've already talked about the, the blue area, uh, in the area of well eight as a, as an area that we'd like to drill to, to see what the bedrock is like. The other blue area up to the northwest is in an area where, as, as you saw from Triton's presentation, uh, that, that there's planned development in that area. And, and, uh, it would be nice for a distribution system to have a source in that area. Uh, one of the things that, that, that it adds is, is when you add a source, you, you're adding chlorine with the water that's being pumped into the source. So that's a, a source of fresh chlorine in that part of the distribution system. And that just, just makes the system easier to operate when you have, have the, the sources, just, just like uh, the idea of having a couple of water towers, like it, you have flexibility with more sources. Uh, in this area, I wouldn't say that I'm as enthusiastic about the bedrock, but bedrock is funny. It's, it's the type of thing where you can move over, you know, 10 meters and get a significant difference in capacity from a well. Um, there are, we looked at, uh, several deep bedrock wells. If you look, see those yellow tags, uh, on some of the wells, those are, those are some wells that we looked at that were bedrock wells. Uh, they don't, they aren't, they don't go to the full depth of the bedrock formation, but they do, uh, produce water from the bedrock. And they aren't exceptional, I, you know, but in the area that we've got in that circle, uh, you know, we, we think that it's worthwhile to, to do at least one test well in there just to see if we can pick up something that's, that's, uh, you know, it's in an area that has not been drilled significantly. So those two areas are, are what we're recommending for, uh, some test drilling. And, uh, the nice thing about test drilling is that you don't need an approval to drill a well. Uh, the well can be drilled just using equipment that, that anybody can have come out to their house to drill a well. Uh, it's the same size, the test well is the same size well that people use for their houses, a, a six inch diameter well. And, and, but that, that hole in the ground, especially in bedrock, you can run a camera down it, you can do pumping tests of it. You can, you can actually even, uh, if, if you, if you think that there's a, a possibility of improving the capacity of well, you can actually put acid into a well to, uh, make the, the fractures that produce the water bigger. So you're, you're making that, that conduit that the water moves through larger and, and improving the capacity of well. So there's, there's things that you can do with the test well once it's drilled. So the drilling of a test well, you know, it's the type of thing where you get your, your, uh, clearances, uh, done, you know, making sure there's nothing buried in the area. And as long as you can arrange for a driller to, uh, be on site, they usually, uh, a test well might take, uh, between a few days to a week, uh, to be, to be drilled. Um, so that's kind of the timeline and, and the, the effort that's required for, for those test wells. And, uh, I guess next slide, there's, um, there's a couple of pictures of, of the sites that we're, we're planning on, like that we've recommended. So you've got the well, the well eight site. Uh, and just those big blue arrows are, are in areas, like they're not exactly where we're thinking of drilling. Uh, there's some buried stuff at the well eight, uh, site that we have to be careful of. And, and I think we're thinking actually a little bit further to the south on the Wells Street, uh, right of way, looking south there. Um, that, that, uh, you know, I think it's the corner of McCauley Road allowance and, and the Wells Street road allowance. So, but it is a, an area that, that, uh, there's reasonable access down that road allowance and, uh, and, and that, that's helpful. And, and there is ownership by the, the township. So next, next slide. So just as a summary, uh, you know, the existing overburden wells, like I said, there's a ton of capacity there. It's just water quality issues. Uh, well, seven B require, would, would ideally require some treatment for iron removal. And, and the real, uh, troublemaker in, in wells eight A and eight B is manganese, especially with, with the ministry, uh, considering, uh, changing the guideline. You know, as far as the manganese goes to, it's important to note that currently the manganese guideline is just an aesthetic guideline where, you know, you have to worry that maybe some manganese is going to make your clothes dirty when you do some laundry or something like that. Whereas they're, they're going to introduce a health-related parameter for manganese, which is, you know, that started stepping up the significance of that, that parameter. Um, and I mentioned, as I mentioned, we, we ideally it'd be good to have a second well at the, the seven site uh, to provide a duplication for seven B. And then as I mentioned, there's a couple of sites that we have recommended for test wells uh, to the north and south of the community. And, and I guess I didn't mention it for the well eight site. One of the, uh, advantages of that site is that there's all that infrastructure there already. It's, it's all available. And if, if, if you were to come across a very good, you know, a Mount Forest well, you know, well four or well six, then, then it would be, you know, something that you could reduce or eliminate the existing wells and, and, uh, use a new well in the bedrock. But, but you have to check to find if that water is there first and, you know, before you get, get going on that boat. So. Anyways, I think that's, uh, that's the presentation. If there's any questions, uh, happy to answer those now.
Okay, questions for Jim? Steve, go ahead.
Thanks for that, Jim. It's really good seeing where all the wells are and, uh, kind of picking out where I think my well is out here near, near Kenilworth. Is there any manganese? I know there's, uh, filters that you can put in, in-house, but, uh, is there like, uh, industrial sized? Manganese, I know there's, uh, filters that you can put in, in-house, but, uh, is there like, uh, industrial sized manganese? Or filters that can filter out manganese?
Yeah, and I think that's maybe a question Triton could, uh, talk to you about, like that's the, the. The, the treatment for metals is, is actually on the, on the easier side for. For treatment side of things, uh, the, what, the iron that, and manganese that's in water in the ground. Is dissolved in there because there's no oxygen down there. When you take it out of the ground, it's, it comes into contact with oxygen and it, and it, it turns into a solid from being dissolved. It turns into a solid and, and, and it, and you see it deposited in the back of your toilet, well, in your toilet, right? You're always, you know. I have, I have a well, you know, you're always cleaning it out, right? And, uh, so the treatment is related to that, you know, if you can get it to become a solid and then filter it out. That's the trick and, and it is expensive though. It takes space, right? Your pump house needs to get bigger. And, and there's, there's different systems that would have to be evaluated to treat. And it's, you know, costs a lot more than, than, um. Than a, than a new well. And that's part of the idea of, of drilling test wells is. It's a relatively, uh, low cost, uh, way to assess if there's a better source. Ideally, what we want to do as well, people, is make the treatment people, uh, the treatment engineers' job as easy as possible. That's my. I get in a lot of trouble with treatment engineers when I bring them while at water with, with, uh, with methane and things like that in it, so.
Did you have another one, Steve?
Yeah, if you didn't mind, um, and then so just with the, uh, well exploration on your, uh. Uh, in your presentation, uh, where well eight and B are down Jones. Like, do you expect probably to find the same kind of a? Solution of, uh, of manganese in that water as well, or?
It's, it, it's different. And in fact, you know, it's surprising that you, if you looked at the manganese in well eight A. And eight B, they're different. Now they're, they're in the same ballpark. But, but I think at one point back when the wells, you know, back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Um, there was, the op, operations was, was, I Corey could tell you if, if like, but I think they were focusing on. Eight B because they felt like it, it had better quality manganese water than, than eight A, I think was the. So, so the, if you go out down into the bedrock. My sense would be that you would get a different quality, that manganese wouldn't necessarily be an issue. Um, you would probably be looking at something that was maybe harder, right? You, you, you get more calcium and magnesium. Not manganese, but magnesium, uh, and, and, uh. You know, you could get iron, that, that's the thing, like it's, it, it would ideally be a different water source. And when we do our test, well, we're going to intentionally seal off the upper part of the bedrock. So we're not. Getting the same source of water. We're looking for something completely different.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jim.
Other questions, comments? Uh, Dan, go ahead. You're muted, Dan.
Jim, do you think that the, the manganese problem is a, I mean. I, I know it's hard to tell without, without doing the, the test wells, but do you think that it's a? A, a, an Arthur. Wide problem, like, I, I don't know if that's the right term, but. You know, if, if you drew a circle, a, a long way around Arthur, do you think that that, that manganese problem is? Going to be within that circle? Uh, but no matter how large, uh, or how far we go out.
It, not necessarily, right? Because well seven doesn't have the manganese, it has the iron. So the metals are really site-specific. We, and, and we, we, we run into this on a consistent basis, like. I've, I've done work in where the, where like a, a well field is going in and there's four wells. And the level of iron and manganese can be twice as much, you know, as little as a hundred meters away. And it really depends on the sediments that the water's flowing through on its way to the well. And it, 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 it's, it, it, it's very frustrating from the standpoint of, uh, you know. Having one well that, that is more than another well so close together, right? So that, there, there is a, you could go around and you could do sampling of, of, uh, wells in the act, you know, in that same aquifer. And, and look for variations of, of manganese, like you could. Kind of try and see if there is a trend. Um, because it could be that there's a layer of sand that has more, more manganese in it that, that. A number of wells in a particular area might have, but definitely I don't think that it's a regional, you know, Arthur problem. I would say that, you know. You know, it's obvious that, that eight A and eight B, they're close enough together that it's an area, that area is clearly has some sediments in it. That, that have manganese, but if you were to step away and, and, uh. You could potentially get a, uh, you know, something better. And, and that, we're going to, we're going to consider that, like if we, at the site that we've recommended at the north end of town. We'll look and see if there's, if there's five feet of gravel on top of the bedrock at the north end of town. We would build something into that because we would want to know, you know, what the, the quality and quantity of that water is. So. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, you, you know, every well is going to have high manganese and.
Just to follow up then, the, but ultimately Jim, you're trying to find a clean. Clean source, right? Like, I mean, that's the, that's the whole. Key to, uh, finding a new, new source is, is a clean, clean source.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, best quality possible, right? That's the, and that's, and that's why you do test wells, but you sample when you, when we do our test well work. We're gonna, we'll, we're, we're going to test those wells to find out what the capacity is. And then we're going to sample them and see if there's a, if it's consistent quality when we, when we do our short tests. So.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Other questions, comments? I saw somebody else with their hand up, but I can't remember who now. Was that you, Corey?
Yeah, it was, uh, Mayor, I, yeah, I think Jim, uh, just basically explained. Ultimately, we are looking for, uh, both quantity and quality. That would be best case scenario. Um, I think drilling it well eight, if we got a little further down and into the bedrock and we were able to find that that water was a better, um. Quality, then it could potentially replace the existing wells and that may solve our. Issue with manganese as opposed to looking at a, a treatment for the wells there. So, um, we could find more supply as well, but I think it, it may help address possibly the, the quality issue. Um, we, for redundancy purposes, we, you know, ideally Arthur. I look at like a triangle. We have, we have wells at the, at the bottom, um. East and west or the southern end of Arthur, we have wells at the bottom corners of the triangle, but not up at the top corner. Um, so if something were to happen, although we have well eight A and eight B, there's two wells there at, at the south end. But if something were to happen on the transmission line on the way into town. Uh, effectively, we, we would have no water supply from, from that area of town. And, uh, same, similar with well seven, um, it's, it's down an area where it has to pump a fair distance to get. Into the first user. So if something were to happen on that transmission line, we lose that well. So ideally another well at the north end of town. With good quality and good quantity would be the best case scenario.
Corey's always such a doomsdayer with like, you know. What happens if something really bad happens? We don't want to think about that, Corey.
I think I've come across it too many times.
Yeah, well, Mike, we, 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 we weren't talking about what could happen if there was a global pandemic, but we found that out too.
Nothing wrong with worrying about what could happen, Corey.
Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Cherry.
Yeah, I just have a question, uh, just for some clarity for myself. Uh, Jim, you talked about, I can't remember what number the wells were. But we could only operate one and not the other, not the two of them at the same time. And I'm just wondering why that is.
So, so well eight, it's eight A and eight B. And when those wells were, um, when we did the exploration for that, that, those wells. Uh, I think we had a target of, you know, this twenty-two or twenty-five liters per second. And, and, uh, when we did our, we did, actually did a test well that, that is separate from those two wells. And all the work regarding long-term testing of the aquifer and everything was done using that, that test well. And, and it showed that you could get twenty-six liters per second from this aquifer quite nicely. And then two years later, the production walls were built and the pump house was built. And twenty-five liters per second was, was, uh, you know, the target, the, the design for that pump house. But in the process and, and, and the reason that two wells were drilled was because if one well were to fail, then you could use the other one. But twenty-six liters per second was the design rate for that pump house. So then, when you build the production wells, you, you only find out exactly how much water is going to come out of a well when you build it. So we built those wells and. The driller did such a good job and the design was good. I get to, I'll pat myself on the back for that one. And, but, but. The, the, the capacity of those wells significantly exceeded the design target. And so, what we saw in, in the testing is that. Twenty-six liters per second times two is probably what you could get from that, that well field. Now. We, that has not been evaluated for the whole aquifer, right? The wells themselves can make that much water. But when, if you start pumping fifty-two liters per second from those two wells. There might be a few neighbors that start to run into some troubles, right? That's, and, and that, that's the whole process of, of developing a, a well field is. Sure, you know, I mean, the biggest step is find the well that can make the water. The next step is you gotta evaluate how it's going to affect everybody in the area and make sure that it's a sustainable water taking, right? So, the great thing about that well site is, is that when it got developed as a twenty-six liter per second site. Turns out the wells can make twice that much, so.
And just to be clear, it's the permit is specifying that only one can be used at a time that's filed with the MOE.
Right. And you can't, you can't increase your permit until you do a test at that higher rate to show what the impact would be, right?
Okay. Other questions or comments? Frank.
How to, but I'm just, uh, looking for some free information from Jim. Um, cause I'm not up to speed on the manganese, uh, potential change. So what's, uh, what's the new limit going to be and why is it going to be? Considered a health parameter instead of an aesthetic parameter?
Well, if the, the, it's Canada that started it. Well, I guess it came from the States first, but, but Canada's guideline has already changed. And, and they've set the guideline at, um, I think it's a hundred and twenty micrograms per liter. So it's a pretty low, it's a, it's a low limit, but my manganese is usually there at a very low limit, right? So. So. And I think we're at just about eleven or, or sorry, a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty at, at well eight A, I think. It's a little bit lower at eight P, I think. So, and that's, I mean, it's just, they're, they're always. Uh, updating those, those guidelines and, and it's typical that the provinces kind of fall in line. Like, you know how it happened with arsenic, the same sort of thing, right? And, and like we heard about arsenic for ten years and they finally pulled the trigger in two thousand and eighteen, I guess. Um, so it's, you know, you're never sure when it's going to happen, but I think. You know, the, the, the word is on the, out there that, that they're thinking about it and, you know, I just. I, I'm being like Corey, I'm, I'm assuming the worst case scenario, right?
So, it's a health, considered a health issue or do I have to not be lazy and look it up online and?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I, you know what? I, I haven't read into the health that, what, what it does to your body. I don't know what, I, I, I haven't gone that far into it. I, I, I probably should, right? If we're talking about this, find out exactly why, why manganese has a. Has an effect. I don't know if anybody else on the calls heard that one, but.
Right, no, that's fine. I, I'll have to go do my own research if I'm that curious, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, other questions or comments? Kyle.
Thought I would, um, just give a little bit of, uh, insight into kind of after you've found a new well. Um, so after you have your preferred location, whether that's in the north or in the south. Uh, there would be some work that would be required to, uh, to add it to the source protection mapping, uh, that Jim showed in his presentation. So there would be, uh, be some work that would be done, um, with, uh, hydrogeologists and engineers. To get the, the modeling done, uh, and to, to create those maps that, that Jim showed for the wellhead protection areas. And then that would need to be incorporated into an update of the Grand River Source Protection Plan. Um, that would then go through a public consultation period and then eventually be, be approved by the province. Uh, and that is required to be done, uh, before you're able to connect the, that well, uh, to the system and provide, provide water. To the, uh, to the residents.
Yeah, that's a really good point, uh, Kyle. The, and, and I think Ray mentioned the same, the, 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 in, or in his report. Uh, Triton, uh, mentions the fact that hooking a well up is a, is a, a long, a multiple year project. The, the, the well in, we just, uh, finished off Rockwood well four. That production well, uh, was drilled in two thousand and fifteen. And it just came online in, uh, I guess August twenty twenty. So, so it was a five-year. Uh, period to get, get it hooked up.
Any other questions? Okay, um, Mike, go ahead.
Kyle, this might be a quick one, I think. So, wh- when we talk about, yeah, the potential for a new well. Uh, and let's say we're, we located in northeast, which would be in what we hope is industrial. Would that potentially limit what type of industrial usages could happen in and around the new well? From a source protection standpoint?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mike. Um, it, it could. It'll, it'll kind of depend where the wellhead protection areas end up. Um, now if they kind of follow and Jim can maybe provide a bit more insight into this, but. If they sort of follow what we're seeing with the, with the current wells, then they, they might actually end up sort of more in the, in the farmland. Uh, to the, to the kind of northern, north part of the boundary. Um, so if an industry is within kind of the hundred meters of the well, that's where kind of the prohibitions could happen. Um, but if it's outside of that, but still within the wellhead protection areas, then it's really risk management. So the industry still continues. But then they work with myself and, and, and my group to make sure there's the appropriate measures in place to, for, for spill, spill response. And secondary containment around fuel and, and things of that nature.
Any other comments, questions? Hey, Matt, I think you guys have a report. Did you want to speak to that report that goes along with these presentations?
Yeah, th- thanks, um, Mayor. Karen, are you able to bring that up? Um, yeah, simi- similar to, to the last time, just wanted to give a recap as far as the resolution. Um, it's really to receive the report, to accept the presentations by Triton Engineering and RJ Burnside. The, the fourth clause in the recommendation has to do with the, the single tower option for Arthur. So that's, um, that's detailed within section three, four, two, two of the Triton Engineering Report. And the last part of the recommendation has to do with in two thousand and twenty-one, as part of the capital budgeting process. Uh, there was a hundred thousand dollars, uh, set aside that would, that would facilitate us, um. Drilling those two test wells that, that Jim spoke of. And Karen, if you can just go down in the report a little. I, again, I think we've covered, covered most of the items here. Um, the items highlighted all have to do with the water tower. But basically the recommendation is made because it's the, the lowest total capital cost of the two options that were investigated. The operating level or the pressure of the system in Arthur could be. The operating level or the pressure of the system in Arthur could be increased with no need for those different pressure zones. So sort of that more complicated distribution system. Um, and operations and maintenance for one tower is, is lower cost than two towers. Um, what I didn't highlight with Karen this afternoon is just the, the Arthur well supply question as far as proceeding with those test wells. I think that's really supportive and, and we've ta- touched on it. Is just that those are, those are, that's a long-term process. Um, you're gonna see in the next report that, that probably the supply is needed in, in the area of, I think it says ten to fifteen, ten to fifteen years.
Tell me to put the other one up, Matt?
No, eight to fifteen years, that's okay. But just getting ahead of it from a planning standpoint and from a source water protection standpoint, um, once we identify sort of the location, then that gives us opportunity to work on, um, work on that. So I, staff is still putting forward that recommendation, but just looking for council to, um, to, to agree to that today, given, given additional information that we've, that we've seen.
I'm sorry, did you get a mover and secondor for that?
I didn't yet. Uh, we'll say that it was moved by Lisa and seconded by Dan. Uh, just comment to your point, Matt, uh, I think the, the uh, water source issue is an important one too, in that uh, if we can find a, a source of water that doesn't have the iron and manganese issues, uh, can, could eliminate or negate the requirement for treating what we have uh, by diluting it. Uh, and if we can't find a, a source that is uh, not have those problems, it changes uh, what potential treatment options might be required too. So I think it's important that we do that sooner rather than later and find out what, what we can find. Any other, uh, anything else you wanted to add, Matt?
Yeah, no, nothing on my end, just available for questions if there are any.
Okay, I'll open that back up to council for questions, comments, and I, I can't see you, so speak up, please. Oh, here we go. Thanks, Karen. Any questions or comments? Okay, everybody got all their questions out of the way, so I'll call the motion. All those in favor? That's carried, thank you.
Okay, uh, Matt, you want me to put the other one up?
Do you want a mover and secondor first, Karen?
Um, usually you get a mover and secondor to get discussion on the floor.
Okay, so let's, let's say it's moved by Sherry, seconded by Steve. And so every, can everybody see the recommendation there in terms of the prioritized upcoming projects? And with that said, I'll open up the floor for any questions or comments from members of council. Anybody have anything? I, sorry, I can't see you again.
I'm good, Mayor Lennox.
Okay, thanks. Anybody? Questions, comments? Dan, go ahead.
You're muted.
By the way.
Getting to be like Steve.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Anybody that looks as good as you do today, you know, deserves a comment. Anyway, that, the prioritization list, that's the staff recommendation in how we're gonna move, how we're gonna look at all these projects moving forward, right? Just go back to that list, Karen.
Yeah, I'm just popping it back up.
Okay.
There.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think looking at that list, I, I'm very comfortable with it. I think that's uh, I think it's a, it's a good prioritized list and it's uh, probably the appropriate way in which we should, we should move forward. So, I'm okay with that.
Do you want this down, Mayor Lennox, so you can see everyone?
Uh, just any, if anybody has anything, just they can speak up and I'll, I'll recognize them at that point. Anybody else have any?
Mayor Lennox, it's Mike. I, I just, I just wanted to speak and, and follow up on Council Yakes' comments in terms of the prioritization. So a lot of these projects, obviously we have ident- identified are significant projects. So, um, some of the work uh, associated with them may happen in parallel. I, I just don't want it to be kind of assumed that we're only doing one and then we move to the next one kind of thing. And I, I think that's understood. I just, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, because in a lot of instances, whether there's EA requirements or design requirements, some of this stuff is gonna hap- have to happen, uh, maybe in unison in some instances. But you, you know, I think having the list in play i- is really positive for, for our staff, um, and for council, so.
Thanks, Mike. And I mean, just, just from your comment alone, I mean, we're already doing, proposing to do some work on the water supply in Arthur in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we're certainly not gonna have the, the Arthur wastewater phase two uh, done in two thousand and twenty-one. So yeah, that, you know, I think recognizing the importance of each of those projects, but recognizing that, that because they're complex projects, they may be ongoing for a number of years as well. Any other questions, comments, anybody?
Ma- Mayor Lennox?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, and just, um, Mount Forest Water Tower and the Arthur Water Tower, those are both similarly, proposed to be similarly sized structures. So staff hasn't fully investigated this, but there might be opportunity to design those towers to be very similar, which would present, which would provide operational efficiencies between the two systems. They don't necessarily, you know, need to be constructed the same year. But I think from a design standpoint, staff is gonna give, give that consideration because there is just some of those synergies or efficiencies that we might be able to achieve with those projects.
Andy, can I just pipe up there just, uh, I, I think what Matt has said, it, it makes a hell of a lot of sense. And I mean, um, Drayton's going through this right now. Um, I think it just kind of makes sense to see what, uh, what designs are out there in the neighboring municipalities and not, as they say, reinvent the uh, the wheel or water wheel.
So, so you're wanting to reinvent the water wheel, Steve?
Not at all. I think uh, what Matt is saying is, makes perfect sense.
Okay, thanks. Dan?
Just, I mean, I, I think we all understand the fact, or the, the issue that Mike's raised, that this is an ongoing, these five priorities are, are gonna be going on, you know, all together at the same time in most cases. But are we? This list, this priority list that we're, we're, we're supporting or hopefully gonna support, does this tie the hands of future councils or, or can they, will they be able to change this list, Mike, moving forward? Or, I mean, hopefully, hopefully they don't. I mean, these are very serious and complicated and complex issues as, as you've stated. But, um, do we, do we tie the hands of future councils with this list?
Through you, Mayor Lennox, yeah, yeah, um, Council Y, I think it's, you know, I, I think I understand the question. Part of the reason for it is not only for, you, you know, from future councils and future staff. It, it also helps us when we're dealing with development charges, um, looking at debts, a- all of those type of things. So, to say that the list could change, yeah, it could potentially change, but there would be other changes that would have to be implemented as well.
Yeah.
So i- 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 it does to a certain degree, um, I don't like to say this, but I do, I think it does to a certain degree, tie all of us to, to moving ahead with these projects because we're, yeah, we're gonna look at development charges tied to these development projects. We know there are certain triggers. We didn't get into it that, in a great detail today, but there's triggers as it relates to certain developments, need some of these things to happen as well. So there, those are triggers, but it really is kind of setting the stage for longer than the current term of council. I guess I would, I, I would admit that, Dan.
Yeah, okay, no, I'm comfortable with that. Hey, I just wanted to know how that would play out in the future.
So, some of the other things that you would be a consideration to quote tying future councils, some of these are, you're gonna have to enter into contracts with, you know, or i- i- if you start an EA or something and, and you've committed money or you've got to sign a contract, that's expensive to get out of.
Yeah. Understood.
Any other questions or comments? I, I, I would just add as well that, uh, you know, the, there's some big projects on here, big, complex projects that have significant price tags and as they may be moving ahead somewhat concurrently or not necessarily just consecutively, that we may be dealing with challenges of how to finance these projects. And, and not only financing, but how do we, you know, have the appropriate staff in place to even manage these projects? I mean, we have the, you know, all of our regular work to do to maintain our existing infrastructure. This is brand new stuff, which requires a fair bit of time and effort. Um, there's gonna be commitments to, uh, you know, things like project management, seeing these things through that are gonna go along with the capital side of it. So I, I, I think we need to be prepared for those types of things as well. So, just, just uh, not wanting to uh, wave or wave the big scary dollar figure, but uh, I think we all have to be aware of it. It's my only point.
That's Mike's job to wave the big scary dollar figure.
Yeah, he, he just wants us to be prepared to say yes. I think that's the challenge.
If, if we're here in the future.
Yeah. Well, we could be getting to some of this sooner than later too, so.
Yeah. I think going on to what I said earlier, though, I mean, these are kind of generational uh, decisions that uh, we don't make them now. You know, you tie the hands of uh, of future residents and future council too. So I mean, it's scary in the future if we don't start now.
Well, and there'd be additional cost if we wait too long. I mean, we talked about a number of these projects. If we drag our feet and wait and wait and wait, there, it's gonna be even more of a big problem to get them implemented when the time is absolutely necessary. So I, I think it's important that we start nipping away at these projects and, and get them underway so that uh, it is more manageable.
Well, that, regulations are probably gonna change too. So if we start now, we won't have to worry about future regulations, hopefully.
Yeah, how did that work for you, Steve?
Never good.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, oh, so just we'll come back to that, that recommendation and I'll just ask for vote, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Now, do we have another report or is that it? Karen?
That's all.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're on to confirming bylaw, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so uh, moved by Dan, seconded by Lisa, that bylaw number sixty-seven dash twenty-one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Wellington North at a special meeting held on June second, two thousand and twenty-one, be read a first, second and third time and enacted. All those in favor? That's carried. And before I move to adjournment, I'd just like to extend a thank you to all of the engineering folks who joined us today. Uh, thanks for all the work you've been doing and uh, the ongoing work that this seems to imply. Um, looks like we've got uh, some projects to work through and, and uh, look forward to uh, seeing what the future holds, so. With that said, uh, we'll move on to adjournment. Um, moved by Steve, seconded by Sherry, that the special meeting of, special council meeting of June second, two thousand and twenty-one, be adjourned at uh, four forty-five P M. All those in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everyone. Uh, we're officially adjourned.